Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Calling the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council don't have any additions or corrections for you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Implications, Oak Heights Covenant Church. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Amy Dufresne, and I am one of the pastors at Oak Heights Covenant Church, but also had the opportunity because I am a youth pastor, and so I'm also your Hey Hutchinson area youth representative too. So, um, quick reading, quick from the Book of Ecclesiastes, wisdom is as good as an inheritance and an advantage to those who see the sun because wisdom is protection, as silver is protection, but the advantage of knowledge is that wisdom preserves the life of its owner. Uh, let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for this time. We thank you for the city council. We thank you for their desire to see the best in Hutchinson. We pray for this meeting. We pray that you give them wisdom and guidance on the conversations, help them to come to a conclusion that is beneficial to all parties and uh seeks your goodness and your promises. In your name, amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Alrighty, we do have a proclamation underneath there. Um, whereas Ekman Oaks began serving Hutchinson community in two thousand, and Ekman Pines has served our community since two thousand twenty-five. Whereas we recognize that Hutchinson older adults have built and strengthened this community. Whereas Ekman Oaks and Pines have cared for seven hundred and sixty-four members of the Hutchinson area. Whereas Ekman Oak and Pines have employed hundreds of team members over the years. Whereas Ekman Oaks and Pines are committed to provide the highest quality care for older adults. Whereas Ekman Oaks and Pines is an important partner with other senior communities, Hutchinson Health, McCloud County Social Services, and the Hutchinson Police and Fire Departments. And whereas Ekman Oaks and Pines have been a trusted resource to help families navigate aging with dignity and support. Now therefore, I, Gary Forsier, Mayor of Hutchinson, do proclaim June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five as Ekman Oaks and Pines Day. In the city of Hutchinson, it's recognized that these for three decades of outstanding care for older members of our community and for being a trusted partner in our area health care ecosystem. Alrighty, moving on, uh, public comment. Anybody wanna address the council? Just please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Alright, we have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of May twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, the budget workshop of May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, and a joint meeting with EDA, HUC, of June fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve those minutes. Second?
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve those minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A is approval of resolution number one five eight seven one, resolution authorizing disposal of wastewater department surplus property. B is approval of resolution number one five eight seven two, resolution authorizing two thousand twenty-six capital budget request for lakes restoration phase two. Uh, C is approval of resolution one five eight seven three, resolution approving termination of railroad right-of-way easement. D is approval of resolution number one five eight seven four, resolution approving plans and specifications ordering advertisements for quotes for Robert Parks complex lighting project. Uh, E is approval of contract amendment to Rice Lake construction for the wastewater treatment facility biostylards improvements. F is approval of FAA entitlement transfer from the city of Hutchinson to the city of Litchfield. Um, G is approval issuing temporary liquor license to the Riverside Music Festival on July eleventh and twelfth of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, H is approval issuing temporary liquor license to the McCloud County Agricultural Association on August seventh, uh, I'm sorry, August fourteenth through the seventeenth at, uh, two thousand twenty-five at, for the McCloud County Fair. I has approval of premise permit application for Crow River snow pro's at Little Crow bowling lanes located at one eleven fifty Highway seven west. Um, J is approval of creekside bagging line improvement. K is approval of settling pub- setting public hearing for June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five to discuss city use of revolving FCP DP funds for downtown housing rehabilitation. L is claims appropriation and contract payments, register A.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sorry, Chad. Um, can we remove item E? We have an amendment to that, so.
I will amend my motion to remove E. Second?
Motion by Chad, second by Pat. With the removal of E, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Man.
I got over to Mike. We had an update in that contract, so.
Yeah, Mayor and council, I just wanted to, um, give an update on item E which you have before you tonight. Uh, Mark, Matt, and I have looked at this over the last, uh, few days, and, um, item one is a change from what you had in your packet. It basically comes right from the state statute that does a better job of defining our role versus the construction manager at risk, um, in terms of the receiving and the awarding of bids. And so we wanted to add that, make you aware of what the change was, um, in reference. So item one is that basically comes right from the state statute and kind of clarifying that role, um, which is really kind of the next stage we're at, um, after, um, I'm reviewing and, and maybe approving this tonight.
Well, it's interesting. I was gonna ask to have this pulled out just because I was gonna ask if the funding, if Andy has discussed any of the funding or come up with how we would like to proceed with that, or if that's for a later date.
Probably later date, and Matt, considering you chime in, I think the conversations I've had to date that we're gonna use as much cash as we can and yet leave, you know, the cash position for the wastewater plant in good position. We do anticipate some borrowing. I don't think we're looking at half, you know, fifty-fifty, but, um, it'll probably be a two-thirds, one-third perhaps. But to your point, Tim, I think it will be defined here as the budget process goes on, you know, throughout the summer.
And that would be just interfund, well, not interfund mode, but it would be a, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Utility bond. So it's gonna be used, you're gonna be, basically you're gonna be using utility rates to pay for it. Now, we're not anticipating an increase in utility rates. We just, it's kind of one of those of trying to balance that, how much cash balance do you have versus, you know, bonding and stuff. But it would be basically, it wouldn't be a tax levy increase. It'd be, we'd be using the utility rates to pay for that bond.
It's more of a question of immediate funds, you know, is this something immediate or is this something you pay for down the road where we can actually have some time to, yeah, have some time to move numbers.
We will have really as much this year to kind of figure out and see where we're at, you know, how we're tracking and things like that, but.
Cause Mike, what did we say? Do we expect maybe a quarter of the funds to be expensed this year with three-quarters of it like next year? So we've got plenty of time to kind of see how everything plays out before we really decide what that most final payment options will be for us, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Take a motion.
So moved.
There wasn't motion. You're just looking.
Oh, you have to cover the other one.
That was the discussion you just called in the motion, so.
Yeah. So are we closing the motion on E or are we going back and doing the?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. That was, that wasn't it.
Do we do the consent first and then do E?
We did the, we did the consent. Yeah, no, we need a motion on E. I'm sorry. That's what I thought, so I was lost, so.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Tim, sent by Ken. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay.
One day, so.
That's alright, Matt. Uh, consent agenda two. My son has a, um, check on there for his business, so I will be abstaining.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Second?
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve with me abstaining. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Um, presentation of city of Hutchinson, two thousand twenty-four year end reports.
Uh, Mayor, council, I'm not doing any fancy presentation. This is just kind of more or less than acknowledgement of the year-end report for two thousand twenty-four. That staff has put together, hopefully get an opportunity to take a look at it. Most of it is kind of all the various different staff reports that you've received over the last five to six months kind of compiled into one document. And then there's some additional information from other departments, um, along with myself. And so I think this is our fourth or fifth straight year presenting it. Um, I know the council sees it. I would highly encourage the public. It really has a
There's a ton of it.
Ton of information on what we're doing here at the city. And so if it's anything as a reminder for the council, if, if there's something we're not reporting on, let us know. We can include that in future reports, but it's also just a reminder of somebody asks you what's going on at the city, and you can go back and you could look at the year-end reports to see everything that's going on within the staff.
One thing I noticed, it's kind of nice when with the boards, some of them have it, uh, the term and like when they expire, like, I know it's the EDA doesn't, but it'd be kind of nice to have, you know, how long? Cause I, I don't even know how long. Is it two terms with a lot of the boards? Or is there a set rule?
Everybody knows that better than me.
Yep, so all the boards except the EDA have a two-term limit.
EDA is just forever?
Right.
So.
And that is gonna be.
Sorry, Pat, forever. Forever, so.
Yeah, well, and I just honestly, I've noticed some people have been on for a long, long time. That's one of the boards where maybe you'd wanna see some new blood, so to speak. I don't know. I'm probably not making any friends with the guys around here now, but I mean, it's how I feel.
You do have a point there, though. I mean, sometimes it's nice to get a, uh, somebody, a new look at it.
It's a pretty important board.
Yeah, along with that being said, um, we did have a resignation, so Mike Cannon has, is moving out of town, so will be a vacancy on the EDA board since you didn't bring that up, so. But yeah, I, I, I can note that to staff in the future reports, you know, if you have a board, clues on that board and what their term limits are on that, so, yeah, we can make a note for that.
I liked having this all together in one, you know, like you said, we get the reports, but this was, takes a while to go through that.
Yeah, it's a lot of stuff, but it's hopefully it's a lot of useful information, like I said, and if there's more, we're always looking to add to that, so.
Well, like you said, the public would look at it and realize just some of the costs involved with all those things in the budgets might answer some of their questions in regards to, well, why isn't this done? Why isn't that done?
Well, you know, and we even include a list of, cause we've had that asked from time to time, why isn't the city going out and getting grants? Yeah, we list all the additional money the city has brought in from third-party sources.
Million dollars in grants and donations last year.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's more or less just a note that that report's done. We'll get it on the website. Um, it's, it's there for you guys to read at your leisure, leisure. If you have any questions, to, feel reach out to myself or staff, and if there's things you'd like to see included in the future, just let us know. We'll make sure we incorporate that in the future year-end reports.
Well, Chad, all, all my time on the council, I think this was the biggest packet that I've ever seen.
Well, I couldn't get in right away. I, I just haven't emailed it.
Four hundred?
And then when it popped up, I'm like.
Four and nine three, you know what? And it's probably one of the smallest agendas we've had too.
But I'm looking at it going, oh my God.
I think this might be Jermaine to this, and this was the question I was gonna ask you. We're using, did we change how we're updating things to the website, like the council minutes and agendas? But, cause I see liquid file, liquid files or?
Yeah, I was a little confused.
Is this because of the size of the packet? It was the only way I could send it?
Gotcha.
Well, it's interesting. Could I look at the council agenda? Cause this is here and I'm on the road, so I actually look on there and it wasn't on there and I was like, it just.
From the digital laser piece today, if you were looking, if you were looking today, there was a.
Assistant one, yeah, today. This one was just different because of the sheer size. And so that's why it might've been a little bit different if you were looking, but normally I don't think we changed anything else in the meantime.
If you were looking on the website today to try and pull up a packet or an agenda, there was some issue.
Oh, okay. Cause I looked at it last Thursday was fine. And then yesterday, it was yesterday or today, somebody asked me if something was on the agenda and I looked and it was like, uh, not here.
Yeah, we had a system. There was a system issue today on that.
That's why I'm sure so the public doesn't think they're going to.
Tim, you gotta be like me, just come and say, Tom.
Usually if you can't, I mean, usually if there's, it's usually a technical issue if there's something going on, but, cause we usually have everything.
But we are changing the email, aren't we? The, I mean, I thought, isn't that changing? Or words? Never mind.
I can see by the looks on your face, I'm off there. Scratch that. Just, just for you, Pat.
I was hinged on Jermaine. You might be past it.
Alright, next, next. Let's move on. Uh, discussion on updating the fee schedule to account for chicken and cannabis license.
Um, yep, Mayor and council, we've had kind of two significant changes, obviously in the last month. Um, one was the adoption of the chicken ordinance. And with that, you know, there was a portion of that where we need to set fees, if we're gonna set fees. And so we need to update our fee schedule. A quick update, um, so I received communication, I think it was last week from Minnesota Extension, and it's their goal to be done with the education piece by the end of this month. So we could be looking at early to mid-July of when we'd be ready to issue permits for chickens in town. And so with that being said, we need to determine, okay, are we gonna have a license fee? The ordinance says that the city can set one. Um, if we are gonna have one, what's that cost gonna be, um, for that? Secondly, um, the state actually last week, um, issued, well, they, they had a, a drawing for cannabis permits. And so they've begun the process of issuing, um, or will begin the process of issuing cannabis licenses. And so with that, we do have the ability to charge a registration fee. Um, it's kind of set by state statute, can't, you know, we're with a maximum amount. Um, and that's the amount that we've actually recommended to the council. Um, so there's really two items that we need to have discussion on tonight so we can bring back to our next meeting a resolution to actually update our fee schedule with those two items. So one is on the, the chicken license fee, and then the other is on the registration fee for, for cannabis. And so I guess, um, you know, we did research. It's all over the board when it comes to chickens, anything from twenty dollars a year to, I think the highest I saw was Woconia that had initial two hundred dollar license fee, and then I think it's an annual fee of, I think, seventy-five dollars after that. So I've, and there's some who don't charge a fee. So it's all over the board, so it's really kind of up to the council generally what our, our advice is, is the cost of issuing, um, a fee and fee use kind of that fifty to seventy-five dollars. That's generally about an hour of a staff person's time. So that was kind of what we threw out there as a range that we'd be, but.
Few communities too, and like you said, zero to higher. I'm just throwing all my thoughts, maybe initial of fifty and yearly of twenty-five. That's just, I'm just, whatever.
Kind of throwing out the same idea. It, it kind of comes down to what's built, I mean, building, building inspection department, those people would be responsible for if there was an inspection.
Yeah, and most of it is just gonna go check out to make sure that you're within the, the setback or, you know, requirements.
I mean, if you have nothing, I, I feel like, I think they need to make a commitment to this, you know?
So you're thinking what, at fifty for the first year and then?
Twenty-five renewal. And that's just my thought, what everybody else.
That, I'd be fine with that.
I'd be fine with that.
Okay. Um, that's fine. We can work on doing that. And then I said, the, the next one is the cannabis registration. You know, staff is recommending the, the initial registration fee of five hundred dollars with a renewal of a thousand, which is what essentially is established in. Don't ask me to try to make that make sense.
I thought we said that. Sheet you sent, it's an initial, like, I looked, so we've got, the one for us, we'd, we'd be concerned would be the cannabis retailer, right?
Yeah.
So it was number five on there, and I thought they said a max of twenty-five hundred.
That's, so that's what the state is charging? And the city can charge, what is that Melissa? It's a maximum, it's about, uh?
Yeah, I saw.
Half, half of it to a max of five hundred dollars.
Five hundred or half, whichever is less. That's what the state's.
Yeah.
So by that, and they're charging twenty-five for their firsts?
Yes, so.
You could do twelve fifty?
No, the max that we could do is five hundred. That's why we recommended that five and a thousand, so.
I love the state.
Yeah.
Did we not set that moment or?
No, we did not set that with our ordinance.
Some numbers in there.
Okay, I was, wasn't sure if we put that in there or not.
Yeah. So, yeah, the law says, I'm, I'm reading this, Melissa, you correct me if I'm wrong, cities, so state law allows for cities to impose an initial retail registration fee of five hundred dollars or up to half of the amount of the applicable license fee under Minnesota, which is ever is less. So that's that five hundred. Um, and then the same thing is with renewal, but they set that at a thousand. And so that's essentially the max that we can charge. So yes, the, the state's gonna be charging twenty-five hundred, but we can only charge five hundred or a.
I don't wanna go, but I'm just looking at the mark. I know the markup and that stuff, it's gigantic. So I, I kind of compare it to alcohol. I mean, it's something that mood altering, and that's, that was where I was trying to, wait a minute, you gotta pay two grand for a liquor license, but.
Yeah, well, that's where.
Yeah, that's why, that's what mythology was.
And so what we, what staff is recommending is what we believe is the maximum amount that we can charge by state law. That's that five hundred and a thousand, so.
I would agree because you're gonna be policing more, you're gonna be sure it's.
But you're right, Pat, although those, that's miniscule compared to liquor licenses.
It is, it is.
So that's, I guess, the difference from when liquor licenses were established and when cannabis licenses are established, so.
As a side note, and I'm always doing this and I shouldn't, cause it elongates it, but I was watching a documentary in, in Boston, has nothing to do with this. Liquor licenses here, two grand a year, there it's three hundred and fifty thousand, and that's if you can get them. They're tapped out, so a bar has to close. I mean, for you to be able to buy that, that's how much it gets involved.
Those are always good numbers to have when people.
No, we could hit a couple of sales, what's up for that?
Sam Adams.
More projects.
I thought Sam Adams was premium.
Yeah.
But then you're right.
Okay, so. Like I said, I don't need any action. That's just, you will take action at your next council. I mean, I just wanted to make sure that.
Be fine with that, five hundred and a thousand.
Matt, you, you mentioned that you think somebody did get one, but not the grounded, whatever.
Well, see, this is what we don't know. So the state issued licenses on Thursday of August, that's round one.
They had people on the news.
Yeah, and so, and but they issue, all, all they did was issue application numbers, so they didn't issue names. So now we've had a couple of calls with people saying, I've got a license, can I want, and we're like, well, that's great. You still need to go through the state before we can issue our registration or sign off on it. So, um, I think the one that called wasn't the local one, but I know they've got signs up saying that dispensary is now available, so I'm not, so that's the interesting, we don't even know who's been issued a license, but I have a feeling there's been a couple in the area because that Thursday afternoon, I think, was when we were already starting to get calls with people saying that they've been issued. They said they've been issued a license, but they were, they were, basically their application number was picked. They're still the app, the state process they need to go to before it's finalized. So I'm thinking we could have licenses within the next three to six months, but.
We're only allowed one, right?
What's that?
Allowed one or two for our size?
No, we didn't, we didn't set limits.
Didn't set, okay.
So we could, you could have as many as we want, or there could be fifteen in town. I'd be surprised, but, so.
Question for you, Chief Jefferson. I know, um, you know, for liquor, you got the breathalyzer and stuff. Is there, did they come up with anything new for, for the cannabis stuff or not, for detection?
Nothing yet. No, I thi- there's some instruments out there, uh, that some companies are selling, but there's nothing that's been standardized to this point. So nothing that would necessarily hold up in court.
I was just wondering, cause I, you know, we, we've talked about that before, how do you, you know, I mean, that puts a strain on you guys.
For somebody, that'll be the holy grail if they can come up with that. Doritos.
Yeah, thanks, chief. Anything else?
Like I said, we'll have a formal action at, at your next meeting, so.
Alright, uh, no unfinished business, new business. Uh, setting council workshop for June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five at four P M. To review city center space needs study report.
We're actually originally looking to do a strategic, strategic plan, but after our conversation with utilities and the EDA, with this report being finalized, we're gonna push that back to July, cause it'd be good to, to see these reports before we, we get to that. So, yeah, the, the study on the space needs study is finalizing, um, and so we'll be ready for that meeting. So we asked that we call a workshop before our next council meeting to go over that report.
Motion approve.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to set that meeting for June twenty-fourth, that two thousand, or two thousand twenty-five at?
Four P M.
Four P M. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Chief, you got anything else for us tonight? Mike, you got anything for us?
Give a couple of bits on our street project. Um, as you probably have seen, um, they did the First Avenue reclaim today, so, um, and then Stony Point is a big, big, uh, um, area of action right now, um, with school out. So that will have a good couple of weeks of work, um, a lot of concrete work and a lot of drain tile to put in, um, to hopefully correct some of the problems of the past. Um, and then Delt kicked off last week too, on Thursday. So, uh, that's going well. A lot of the valve and the water shut-off work is focused on this week and hopefully after this week, if all goes well, they'll be done with that portion of it. And then that one will start hopefully button up pretty quickly. So both are tracking really well, but, uh, if you've watched the forecast, it looks.
Sounds pretty wet the next few days.
Sounds pretty wet the next week and a half, so that definitely could set us back a little bit. But, uh, to date, we're tracking really well. So library, um, you can probably see a bit of inconvenience. Katie and the staff there have been great to work with though, and working with patrons. So, um, that will button up too, hopefully next week. Uh, but there's a lot of concrete work at that entrance. Accessible every day, but it, it comes with a little, you know, a little limitation, but, uh, they've been really good and patient with us in that process. And then, uh, Mayor, you had asked to speak to the micro-surfacing, so we had put out a, um, um, Facebook, uh, blip on this, on a micro-surfacing theme project. Pretty tried and true, kind of the first time we're using it here in the city of Hutchinson, but, um, the micro comes from a very thin overlay, about three-eighths of an inch. Um, we've got a couple of areas of town where it looks to be a particularly good application, Fifth Avenue, um, going east. Um, we're gonna try it there, um, Robert's parking lot. Um, we're gonna do it there. Um, it's a relatively big parking lot and to do a milling overlay, it's, you get a lot of value, um, with the coverage. And, um, it holds up pretty well. It's a pretty durable surface. So, uh, we're gonna try it in a parking lot application, try it on a road surface, and then Jefferson is also a portion of that. A portion of the street that we did a few years ago that hasn't quite lived up to our expectations. So we're gonna clean up a portion of that hopefully with this application.
So I watched a little bit of the video. It's, it's asphalt, you know?
Correct. Kind of an emulsion project or product. And, um, one of the key keys to it sets up really quickly. So there will be a little bit of a delay. We'll have some flaggers. We'll have to alternate lanes of traffic, but generally speaking, the street portions will stay about an hour.
An hour, an hour.
Yeah, you get the right conditions, especially this time of the year, it dries pretty quick, cures up pretty quickly and you can be back on it pretty quickly. So, um, so we're gonna try it, see how it, uh, works and hopefully it's another tool in the tool belt.
So there, I I know like on Fifth Avenue, I don't think there's that much prep work to that, is there?
No, uh, very little, I mean, it will be basically as is, I think there's a bit of sweeping that they'll do, but that is it. Um, it'll basically be the emulsion of this product out on one lane, come back on the next one once that one's set, traffic will resume. And, uh, as I said, there'll be a little bit of, uh, flagging because of the, you know, uh, two-way traffic, you know, will be limited to one lane. But should be a day long process. But again, looking at the forecast, it might be hard to get in next week like we had hoped, starting on Monday, so.
Don't let those flaggers stand in one spot too long, they'll be glued down.
Yeah, they might be glued down, exactly, so. But, yeah, watch the video, it's a short, relatively, but pretty informative, so.
All right, thanks, Mike. Mark, you got anything for us?
I did have one thing I had wanted to talk about. So you had mentioned earlier in the meeting about, uh, the E D A interim limits and things like that. And that really touched on something that I had been thinking about bringing to the council sometime this year. And that is, uh, kind of the opposite of what you guys are talking about. So our ordinance, as I mentioned, limits, uh, board or commission members to two terms. Um, for some of our boards and commissions, there's a difficulty getting people to apply for them. And there are vacancies, especially when it comes to my mind is the charter commission right now. So I had wanted to have at least a discussion item sometime perhaps later this summer about amending that ordinance to, um, get rid of that two-term limit. Um, so that would at least broaden the pool of candidates. Say if someone wanted to stay on the board, they could, rather than having to leave that board and then there's a vacancy that we can't fill. Um, it doesn't mean that, um, people would be forced to stay on or anything like that, but.
Could you word it, Mark, that, you know, if there are no applications for the new vacant spot, that person can stay? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I suppose I could do that.
I mean, I don't know, just thought, yeah, I don't know, I'm not opposed to that, I get that, I just, you know. I I was more concerned sometimes it looks like some, there's people that are just.
Well, yeah, like I said.
I've gotten, I don't preface why I bring that up. I've had people come up to me and mention that, some people do watch that and they say.
Yeah, you know, the trump card that you as the council can always play is, um, you don't approve the reappointment for the person that wants to stay on, right? You're just gonna think, hey, they've been on for twenty years already, it's time to leave and sorry, we're not gonna approve it this time.
You know, it's interesting, I'm just adding to it, you know, we have some boards that I think we have no problem recruiting members for. Or we have, or been, or board members who really enjoy being on that. And then there's others, you you can't get anybody to fill a spot. And I think that's the, the.
Right.
The difficult balance is that it's tough to find somebody. It'd be nice to have the flexibility, if somebody wants to stay on there longer, they can. But I also understand the point too, if somebody's been on there for forty years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
You know, it it is a commitment, because I I've had people that beg me to get on a board, put them on a board, they stay on for, if if they come to the meetings, that's. But, I mean, I had one guy that came to two meetings and he was done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's that part of it too.
So maybe just something to think about, I'll I'll have it on for discussion item later this summer and we can talk more about it.
All right, sounds good, thanks, Mark. Anything else?
No.
No.
Pat, let's start with you tonight.
Uh, well, as I talked about a couple of times, the sculptures are showing up, I think most of them are here now. There's some pretty cool things for people to look at from the, uh, that aspect, the stroll. There won't be as many pamphlets out this year, we used to put them on each one of those sculptures and they ended up just getting tossed, you know, and it's kind of expensive. So now they've got them at, uh, uh, Lynn Hasen, at Park and Rec, and then there's also some at the Chamber. And there may be some in the ones.
I think there's some online.
Yeah, there are some, yes, yes, you can look online, yeah, yeah. Um, other than that, not a lot.
All right, thanks, Pat. Chad?
I didn't have anything extra tonight.
Tim?
I've been contacted numerous times, so maybe Chief can help out with this, uh, about protesting in town. And my comment to people is, one, it's constitutional to protest. And they're asking about where, can you do it in a park without a permit? You know, can you do it on a public sidewalk without a permit? Is a permit needed? Counter, and my comment to them is, you know what, if people are protesting, contact the police department of the city to find, make sure you stay within the confines of whatever the law is on that. And, uh, keep it peaceful and be kind to your neighbors. And if you're gonna counter protest, uh, make sure you treat each other with respect. Everybody's entitled to their opinion, and men and women died for that. And so we want to make sure that we do it respectful unless Chief has any comments on that. But I figured, you know, it's the perfect place to let people know it's it's okay to do it.
So we don't really have a designated area for protesting or whatever, obviously would have to be, um, someplace that the people were allowed to assemble. So if it was private property, the landlord would have to say, okay, um, public property, um, you probably can assemble. We don't have a specific assembly permit. We do have parade permits, is my recollection. Um, so, yeah, I mean, they would be allowed to assemble, I assume, in any public place as long as they weren't interfering with traffic, weren't harassing people, weren't causing some other type of disturbance. Um, that would be my two cents, I don't know if the chief has anything else, but that would be my opinion in a nutshell.
Most of what I've seen has been on public sidewalks, which probably falls into that, you know. There was some out in front of Library Square, I wouldn't say it was enough to where they were consuming the entire park cuz then you'd probably have to get a permit to rent the park, but I'll give it to Tom.
Yeah, I think, uh, I would agree with, uh, what Mark had to say. The only thing, we do have a s- ordinance that prohibits impeding flow on sidewalks as well. So if they are gonna use a sidewalk, they can't impede normal flow of pedestrian traffic. Um, but, yeah, any place public, uh, is okay.
As far as I know, we haven't had any complaints about impeding traffic flow.
No.
Sidewalks or roads.
No, we haven't received any complaints.
No, and none, none of the comments were about that, it was, you know, do, cuz there's groups that want to do it. And they said, well, you're gonna have to contact the city or the police department.
I would say the the same thing, if it's on private property, you have to have permission of the private property owner. If it's on public property, you know, um, once again, you can't impede the, you can't impede the flow of traffic. Whether, so you can't necessarily do it on a public street because you'd be doing that. Or if you're doing it on a sidewalk, you have to make sure you're giving people the access through it. Um, you know, if you're looking to take over an entire park, we do rent park out. And so that's, that's, I would say that's probably where the gray line, if they're taking up a little corner of a park, we're probably not going to, you know, doing a lot of, all of a sudden, the entire park is filled up, then you should be receiving a permit to use that park during that.
Or there's another event going on at the park.
Yeah.
That would be, you know.
Yeah, if somebody has already rented it, they kind of have exclusive rights to the park at that point, so.
Mark, you have some idea?
Yeah, I mean, just if, if they have, obviously rented that park, you would expect that that rental be respected and that people wouldn't gather in that. Um, but, yeah, we do not have any specific, specifically, uh, a permit for protesting or demonstrations. Our code does have an assembly permit, but it's more like for circuses, carnivals, stuff like that. So, um, again, just what we've been saying years, as long as it's feasible and not impeding other people's rights for movement or safety or welfare.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Tim?
No.
All right, Matt?
Um, a couple of things, I handed out on your desk and this was talked about at that joint meeting with Hutch Utilities and, um, the E D A. Who are officially received our notice for that, um, open house on the the high voltage transmission line project that's gonna be going through Hutchinson, goes out to Litchfield and Wilmer. So, um, just wanted to kind of get you a copy of that. They said the one in Hutchinson is on June nineteenth. Um, they have two times from eleven to one and four to six. Once again, it's just an open house, um, that's Juneteenth, June nineteenth is Juneteenth, and city officers are closed on that day. So, um, just kind of a reminder on that. Um, I did send out, you know, the, for Water Carnival, they are doing a stadium dedication at the baseball field on Saturday at two o'clock. Um, if you're interested in going, please let me know. I know Chad said you're probably gonna be there, Tim said he's probably gonna be there. If we're gonna have at least three, we should probably formally set that as a, a meeting with non-action, um, of the council. And then, uh, the last thing is the pool opened yesterday. Um, of course, yesterday was cold, um, but there've been a couple of changes and I wanted to share it with the council and the public who's maybe watching on T V cuz I think it's always good to know because people ask, you know, so there are extended open swim hours this year. So it's open from twelve thirty to eight. I think la- the previous years was twelve thirty to seven, correct, Chad, I think so it was? Yep, um, and so fitness time is from five thirty to nine and eight to nine at night. Used to be, I think, seven thirty to nine. Uh, there's no zip line for the season. The mechanics of that is shot and it's sixty, sixty grand to replace. So when we talk about how expensive things are, and so, um, I think they're taking a year to kind of evaluate, you know, do we bring the zip line back? Do we look at maybe a new or different feature? I think the park board's had some discussions on that. Um, but just cuz I know anytime we change something up, people start asking. But, um, that's kind of, just in case you get any feedback on that, you know, it's, we've learned, doesn't matter what we do, it's not gonna be perfect to somebody, but, um, so.
How long has your aquatic been open?
It's been, it's going on, we open in seventeen. So it's eight, nine years already, so.
It's a warranty.
So, yeah, pass that warranty, so. Um, so, yeah, those are kind of the big things, always like to kind of give that update on the, on the pool. And then, like I said, if we're gonna have a quorum, we should look to set that as a, a meeting on that Saturday.
Entertain a motion to set that as a meeting?
I can do that, so moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Tim, second by Chad, uh, put that as a meeting on Saturday.
At two, at one forty-five.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay, motion carries.
That's it for me.
Um, Dairy Days, uh, good turnout for Dairy Days, uh.
The weather was huge.
Yeah, it, uh.
They went through eight hundred burgers.
That's what I heard.
So.
And I didn't get one. I was standing, I guess I was talking.
You're counting right there for you.
Yeah, I wanted a little, well, more well done than that, but, um.
On the hoof.
Tractor pull was very well attended, uh, got to go that on Friday night. Uh, very interesting to see them things fly down those tracks, that's for sure. Um, Water Carnival kickoff, um, was, uh, last night. Um, Matt, I wish your dad was was here with me because some of the candidates come up, you know, they are all were dancing in front of it. They had a guy who was a retired, uh, police chief, I guess, was, uh.
Tim Albertson?
And he, he was playing these songs and the girls were dancing and they come up and I asked the one, I said, uh, that was a really good song, wasn't it, the Del Shannon Runaway? She goes, never heard of one before.
So, my dad's now retired, so I will, first time to come on and hang out with the dairy.
Yeah. Um, the only other thing I had someday contact me about, uh, this, uh, with summer, kids running around, uh, just be aware of kids running around close to the streets. So, um, the sun almost got hit, so.
Especially over by Alex Park, it's full, all the days, you know.
And we should go on off that Water Carnival, there's events all week for people.
Yeah.
Check online or anywhere, you can kind of find out what's going on, there's things going on, the boat parade, uh, just lots of activities in the Water Carnival Parade on Father's Day.
Yep. So, that that.
To adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn, any other discussion? Favor say aye.
Aye.
For both, nay?
I think you have the record to the most.
Looking please.